Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. First, we'll call the NRTA Advisory Board Meeting to order.
Good evening. The first item is public comment on the NRTA only if there's anything here that's not otherwise on the agenda that anyone wanted to bring to our attention. Hearing none, we'll move on.
Okay. There's a new disabled community representative on the board, John Malloy. I thought he was going to be here tonight to serve on the board and to introduce you all to him. But he was recently appointed per the legislation requirement for a disabled representative. He is currently a member of the Commission of Disability and has served on several boards relating to the needs of the disabled community. His professional career, he has a PhD in special education, has spanned 50 years working on behalf of persons with disabilities, and he continues to advocate for that population. So I think he'll be a good representative.
Great.
Approval of the minutes from December 6th?
Make a motion for their approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the Audit Services Agreement?
Yes, this is approval for Audit Services with Bruce D. Norling, who is our current auditor for fiscal years 2018 through 2022, for a fee set at $13,800 per fiscal year. And the scope of services includes all services related to auditing the NRTA's financial statements, including reporting requirements under the GASB 34 reporting model. In the event that the NRTA receives a federal award of more than $750,000, a single audit would need to be done, and that cost would be $3,500 per year. I don't anticipate receiving more than $750,000 in federal funding. So I would recommend that the board vote to approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Open Meeting Law. This is just kind of meet the regulations of the Open Meeting Law for posting of minutes and meeting notices that I've always posted through the town clerk on the town's website because I kind of think that's where most people go. I do, however, put the board agendas, packets, and approved minutes on the NRTA website. So this is just saying that posting on the NRTA website is an official method for notification, and then we just need to notify the town clerk that we'll be doing that per the Open Meeting Law. So I would recommend the board vote to designate the NRTA website as the official method of meeting notifications and to notify the town clerk of this designation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so next we have a report from the Finance and Audit Committee for meeting they had February 27th with the auditor and are meeting this morning for the FY18 Budget Amendment and FY19 Preliminary Budget. And they also met as the Compensation Committee. So I'll let Jim and Jason say whatever they-
We're a two-member committee, so we're co-chairs.
Yeah.
And this is a little, just so everybody knows, at this point, we are just in the reviewing stages of budgets and budget amendments and preliminary budgets. The actual approval or amendments will be made at their, I believe, in April, April 11th. So back, but first on the Audit Committee, we received the audit report from the auditors. We also had a comprehensive discussion, not only of the audit, but of the management letter, and found both to be in good standing, and with some compliments to management on the way they, especially for internal controls, the way they manage what can be a very complex operation for such a small entity. And we don't approve the budget, we just, we don't approve the audit report, we just accept it, which we did. Paula, want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay. Want me to do the compensation start?
Yeah.
So we also had a Compensation Committee meeting today. The director had made a presentation on her request for a salary increase of, I think, $15,000, which was about 16%. We had conversations about that in a closed session and had a conversation specifically about the expansion of the duties and the complexity of her role now that we're going into year-round service. And with the understanding that we usually give a 2% COLA, we're thinking about some other adjustment to recognize that. And again, we're not voting on this tonight. This is just for, you know, I guess, a conversation. So our thoughts were around additional 5% or so, but that's certainly up for, but it's just some method of recognizing the additional, both simply moving from a seasonal to a year-round operation. But so we're certainly not wedded in any one number.
And I think it's important just to recognize that the role of the Compensation Committee is to look at and review and discuss the NRTA administrator's salary compared to the other 14 regional transit authorities, which is why the request that I made was comparable almost to some of the other administrator salaries.
Well, I mean, without, I don't know if we want to get into that conversation.
No.
We actually debated that, and the next, you know, we talked about what's the measure of complexity, and was it number of routes, is it number of buses, is it number of employees? And Paula said it's the budget. And the next, we're the smallest operation in terms of budget and size, and the next is Martha's Vineyard, and it's about three times the budget of ours. So.
Can you share, have we received that information? Or, yeah, because I'd like to see that at some point.
Yeah, we can, Paula can distribute that. I don't know if it's in the-
Right. Now, I'm happy to share it, but that was provided to the Compensation Committee.
That's fine. Well, they can send it, or you can send it.
Before we vote.
Yeah, I want to-
Yeah, this is for conversation.
Exactly. I'm just saying, prior to voting, we'd love to see that, and I'd like to see the number all in, including all benefits, et cetera. I want to make sure, because we're a small, yeah, because we're a small service, we want to make sure that wages aren't crowding out the other, you know, maintenance rate bear and the other items. And I think, Paula, you do a really good job. But I think, you know, on all of these union contracts and all of our contracts, we have to make sure that we have money left to do everything else.
So there was a question we asked, and Paula, you might want to respond how you answered that when we posed the question, and how you, in terms of were able to identify a funding source for the increase that you put in the budget.
Yeah, I was just looking at the other line items, not giving away anything in other line items, but where, based on actuals, where there could be some maybe cuts or minimizing to get to that.
I'd be interested in seeing, like, the comparison for health insurance splits from other communities and comparison about how much support staff other communities have, because they may have a much bigger salary budget overall for their bigger operation.
Yes, and that sheet will show you their CFOs, their assistants and things. I will do my best, my colleagues aren't always great at sharing or getting back, but I will do my best to try to get as much of that as I can.
Okay.
And not to interrupt, but Mr. Malloy, just-
Oh.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You want a seat at the table?
We have a seat for you.
We introduced you as the representative.
So when you said five additional, was your suggestion-
Total of seven.
A total of seven?
Yes.
Okay. And Paula, do you have an idea, is it just estimating now at this point, really, how much additional time you'll be spending as a result of it being year-round?
It's some of that, and it's some of that just of what my responsibilities are as the administrator, which are the same as every other administrator in the Commonwealth as far as federal regulations, reporting, state requirements, you know, we all have to do the same, same thing. And then, like, just an example with the budget, I don't give that to, my CFO would say, prepare the budget, report back to me. I'm preparing the budget, I'm doing the accounting. And that's pretty much consistent, you know, with anything that we do, you know, I'm heavily involved in, in service. I told Jim and Jason today, you know, some of the administrators from the larger authorities aren't going to the school selling bus passes, you know, so just things like that also.
Thank you.
I think what, as we were looking at, you know, thinking about other, other positions in the, not by looking at any kind of a salary wage comparison, but just from our understanding of what the role of other directors are within the town, Paula has profit P and L responsibility, which is a little different than anyone else, you know, other than the town manager. So that's a, that was also kind of a consideration.
Okay, so we'll be taking that up again.
Yep. Are you clear on what, are you clear on what the board's asking for, for additional information? Do you want, maybe you want to repeat that so we are sure that they get what they're asking for?
Health benefits from other areas, areas and other RTAs and the salary comparison and stuff.
I mean, is that your complete package?
Yeah, well, it's, we should be comparing, you know, our benefits, our pension, all of the, we should compare similar to someone else. We should be looking at everything. Okay.
And just so you know, per 161B statute, the Advisory Board specifically approves the RTA administrator salaries, so that will be shown on the notice.
Okay.
And in terms of the budget, the current budget reflects the administrator's request of a 16% increase, and we asked her to go back and revise that to what we were speaking of, a 7%, even though it may end up, it may end up as some number different than that.
Okay.
Okay, great. To the board, and if there's any other budget comments.
Okay, so we'll move on to-
The approval of the FY-
Next to Matt.
Yeah.
Can we, can we help him?
Do you want to, do you want to come, Mr. Malloy?
I'll take it.
It's a trap. They get me every time.
So next time, we'll have a name, name plate for him?
On order. So for the approval of the FY18 Budget Amendment, which you can do tonight, the reason for the amendment is the additional service that we'll be providing from April through our regular start time in mid-May. Also, the fare increase, so that is reflected in the revenue side. And then the expenses increasing from $1,949,284 to $2,61784. So that just allows me to spend to that amount rather than go over from the approved amount.
So the Finance and Audit Committee reviewed this in some detail, and I make a motion to approve the FY18 Budget Amendment.
Did you have a comment?
A second, I have just a comment. When do we usually start? And then it's three weeks earlier.
So this year, it will be May 14th with the summer service.
We're starting May 14th?
Well, we're starting, we're starting bus service April 27th.
Right.
So three weeks earlier than our normal May 14th start.
Okay.
In time for Daffy?
Yes, our first Daffy.
Fantastic.
Exciting.
So vote on the motion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We did have a kind of a brief conversation that this is, again, it's, sometimes it's good to sit back and celebrate our achievements. And for government time, this, I think we did this pretty quickly, the year-round bus service, and I personally think it's one of those things we won't know the impact until it happens. But this could have a very transformative impact on the way we get around as a community. And over time, as we rely on bus service, it could be very transformative. So I'm pretty excited about it. Really applaud everybody's effort, including Rameen, who served as a facilitator for this, and let it roll.
Yeah, with a little bit of time, it will really show that people can become, can rely on it running year-round.
People that are finding out about it are really excited about it.
They are. I've mentioned it to a couple of people, and they didn't know about it, and they were so excited. Do we have a map of the routes?
Yep, I, I, oh, there, no, I'm sorry. But I do have anybody from the public.
If anyone wants one, these are out front.
Out in the hallway. Everything is updated on our website. So our April service, let me jump into that now. Our April service until our normal summer service starts in mid-May will be the Mid-Island Loop, the Maya Comet Loop. They'll be operating on 30-minute schedules, weekdays from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and weekends, 7:00 to 7:00. The Sconset, we're calling it Sconset via Old South Road Route, but it will, during that time and in the, for the year-round service, will primarily service the Old South Road, Nobody or Farm Road corridor with a few daily trips to Sconset. Same hours of operation. And that schedule is a little different than it is in the summer, a little more frequent service because we're only going partway, and then a little added time when we go to Sconset and come back. But we've hit the commuting hours and some afternoon times with kids and Tom Nevers, we heard a lot from, from the parents. So we'll, we'll see about that. We're starting to roll out our marketing campaign that we're making history. So look for posters and ads, and we'll be having an event the morning of the 27th when buses start down at the Greenhound. So invitations will be forthcoming. Everyone is invited to attend, and we'll kick it off. So everyone will be seeing more and more these next couple of weeks as we-
So we tried a little bit about marketing and getting the word out, and thinking a little bit outside the box, I suggested that maybe we have an Advisory Board meeting on a NRTA bus. Have Gino come and film it. And whether we're tooling around on a route or just sitting in a parking lot, I think it sends a strong message about how exciting this is and to the community, and another way to create awareness.
And then we also should take the bus to the-
Yes.
To the Select Board Meeting sometimes and go home with it.
I do that.
That was another idea.
And I'm going to let the record reflect that this was all Jim's idea, because it was, and he was really excited about it, but it wasn't. But I think it's fantastic, and we can do, we can do some fun stuff like that. So just with the presentation of the FY19 Preliminary Budget, I also included the 2018 Fixed Route Operations going into 2019. Just to, the budget supports the level of service on that information sheet, and it's what we've been talking about and what we've been doing in the addition of year-round, of year-round service. So if there's any other questions or changes to the preliminary budget going to the final budget, I will make those changes. Finance and Audit Committee will meet on the final budget, and it will be presented to the board as well as the 2018 levels of service for your approval on April 11th.
Great. There's no other business, right?
No.
Okay.
Like I said, all the information on the service is on our website. Email me, call me, happy to answer any questions about what's going on. But we put a ton of information on the website.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, motion to adjourn the NRTA?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the County Commissioners. For March 28th. And under announcements, the County Commission meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the County Commissioners tonight on a matter that is not on the agenda? Any new business from board members? No? Next item is approval of minutes and warrants. Any motion to approve the minutes of February 21st, 2018? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Oh, actually, no. I should abstain. I wasn't, I missed that meeting.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Do we want to just-
Second to the motion. Rita made the motion, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no. Next item is approval of payroll and treasury warrants for March 2018. Is there a motion for their approval? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. We have one item of official business from the Planning Office, and I'd ask Andrew, Representative of the Planning Office, to come and speak to this item. Thank you. Hi, Andrew.
Good evening. Thank you. I sent you an email, I think, which is fairly self-explanatory on this. What, the area that we're talking about on the map behind you is the area in front of what Shone has Lot 84. Fairgrounds Road is a county road layout, and the condition from the planning board is that the area between the bike path and the road, which has some vegetation, be retained and basically be kept as an area where that's not going to be cleared. The vegetation is important to screen this particular property from the road, and the condition was that the board receive your commitment within 120 days of their decision. So we'd ask that you make that commitment here tonight.
And just a couple questions. Andrew, is this within the ground lease or the, that's used for-
It's outside of the ground lease area. It's in the road right of way.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, my only question, it says, I'm reading the condition, shall remain in place for at least two years after the issuance of final certificate of occupancy.
That, that goes, that goes to the separate issue of the particular, the lots on Tacoma.
Okay.
So this, this only deals with that area in the front, and this is, this is intended to be a permanent restriction.
On, on the bike path.
So in between the road and the bike path?
Right.
It's going to stay, that'll stay-
Vegetated. It could have additional planting put in. But again, the idea is that that stays fairly wooded.
And the lots on Tacoma, if, if a building permit is issued to start something on one of those lots, that restriction is-
Yes, and that's an issue for the town, not the county. Yep.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Are there any reports from County Commissioners or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. We are adjourned. Madam Chair.
Yes, I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I just need to get to that packet.
Select Board Meeting.
Oh, excuse me. I've already made the mistake myself. Select Board Meeting to Order.
You should be more politically correct.
I think the chair gets a pass.
I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda. There may be an unanticipated item that we're going to discuss. I'll look to the town manager.
For announcements, we have the following. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. The annual town meeting starts Tuesday, April 3rd, at 6:00 p.m. at the high school. And I just want to mention that we have prepared a voter's guide. It looks like this. It's online, and it will be available at town meeting. We also have copies at our office as well as the atheneum. We've really worked hard this year to get a lot of public outreach going about town meeting. We've done some videos with some finance committee members and myself, as well as some different departments with Gino TV and NCTV. I've gone to Rotary to review this and the Nantucket Town Association. Some of us were at Meet the Articles last Saturday, and some of us have done radio spots about the town meeting. So hopefully we don't, hopefully we find that people are pretty well informed by the time we get to town meeting. The warrant is, should, it has been mailed, people should have gotten it by now, or will get it today or tomorrow. That is also online, and we also have copies of that in our office and other locations around town. There is no Select Board Meeting next Wednesday, April 4th, in anticipation potentially of town meeting extending into that Wednesday. So the next board meeting would be Wednesday, April 3rd, which is the day after the annual town election, which is Tuesday, April 10th. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the high school.
Okay. Do we want to take up?
Okay, so I understand there are some people here regarding the potential of extending commercial scallop season. Unfortunately, this came up to our office today, so we didn't have a whole lot of time to really prepare for it. And hopefully, going forward, the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board could get at something like this earlier so we can get something in our packet if needed on time. But if the board is so inclined, they may or may not want to speak about this. But there were lost days over the winter. The board can vote to extend the scallop season. I would recommend you do that to a date certain. Maybe there's a recommendation about that. And we have had some internal, very quick, because it's just coming up now, discussion about whether or not the Division of Marine Fisheries approval is required. And I think I'm being told that they, at the very minimum, need to be notified whether or not official approval is required. I'm not totally 100% sure. So I don't know if Mr. Lowell wants to expand upon some of that.
Are we doing this under announcements or under new business?
We'd have to make a determination that this was an unanticipated item.
Yeah, I, I think we were moving into public comment.
And, well, I was, I was bringing this up now because I assumed the public comment was coming and that we might be addressing it prior to people standing up.
I make a motion that this was unanticipated, and if we want to make a decision on it, we should.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I'll look to you for a recommendation.
Madam Chair and the board, thank you for hearing this tonight. I'm Andy Lowell, Chairman of the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board. I'd like to quickly address and attempt to justify this late request. As you know, there have been many variables in harbor conditions this season, and until the last nor'easter did the fishermen feel confident that an abundance of adult scallops remained to be fished. The strong winds uncovered beds that they were unable to discover previously. The fishermen's intent was to present this to us at our last SHAB meeting, but we did not achieve a quorum. I've individually polled the board members and have received unanimous support. Also, as a member of the Nantucket Shellfish Association Board of Directors, I feel confident in speaking on their behalf of unanimous support. Also, myself and Mr. Cocker have spoken with Mr. Carlson today and will also verify his support in this move. Mr. Cocker spoke with biologist Tara Riley, gaining her support also. Mr. Cocker has also been in contact with Dylan Fernandez, whom is contacting the Division of Marine Fisheries to orchestrate a possible fast-track, if that is possible. Mr. Cocker has worked diligently, making contacts to assist the easing in this process. Behind me stand a handful of ambitious, well-respected, and seasoned-bait scallopers. They've battled a windy, icy, and raw season, yet continue to desire harvesting a healthy crop of scallops that will perish due to end-of-life span by May or June. The retail markets, markets wish to buy this product, and we will all benefit by them being on menus this coming season. And also, an extension to the season could possibly benefit the bad press we've had from the sewer disaster this- the bad press we've had from the sewer disaster this winter in showing that we still have a healthy crop of seafood here in our harbor.
Could you give us an idea of what date you're thinking?
They do like two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay.
And what day would that?
Yeah, right.
Well, should we just say?
If we're going two weeks from March 31st, which is the official end of the season, I'm assuming that would be, uh, the 14th. April 14th.
If possible. The state could possibly give up to?
Not to do it. So?
Should we make it the 15th, since that's a Sunday?
No, Monday through Friday.
Is it at the end of the day, though? Okay.
And Tara Riley, has she's given her approval?
She has. Yes.
Do we need to throw in there, you know, to do this on the 14th? But with, was it fisher, the fishery?
Yeah, whatever approval might be required.
Okay, or notification?
Right.
Whatever they need?
Pending whatever approval we need from the Department of Marine Fisheries.
I'd make a motion that we extend the scallop season through the end of April 14th, pending the necessary approvals. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. We look forward to having the scallops.
Yes, we do. An extra two weeks.
Okay. Yes. Well, I'll go back to public comment. I just wanted to preempt the fact that a number of people were probably going to want to make public comment on this, that item. Are there any, are there any public comments for something that's otherwise not on our agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak this evening. As many of you know, at some point yesterday afternoon, or late evening, pardon me?
Speak your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Richard Ray, private citizen. My comet pond was opened to the ocean yesterday afternoon, or late afternoon, without the benefit of permits or planning or anything else. And I apparently have some thank yous to hand out. I just don't know who to hand them to. I'd like to thank whoever did that for the swamp that I'm going to have, and many of us in my upper, in the, in the south end of the pond are going to have for the next four to six to eight weeks. And then the mosquito issue that we're going to have for the six to eight weeks following that. It's unfortunate that something like this has to happen under the pretext of flooded basements and flooded lawns and things of that nature. I don't have an answer for it. It just seems irresponsible of individuals to do this sort of thing. The, although I am not a fan of what SBPF is doing in Sconset, I must admit, they have done it with permits and planning, as opposed to this fool stunt. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just a bit of follow-up. I know it is not an agenda item, but there has been quite extensive staff discussion about this today. And it sounds as though, at this point, the environmental police officer is investigating the opening. Natural Resources Coordinator has been in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. This pond, while not subject to local and state approval to open, is subject to Army Corps of Engineers approval to open. So it's been explained and understood by the Army Corps that the opening was with, was not town sanctioned and done illegally by unknown people. And it does take a license from the Army Corps to close the pond. We had a lot of discussion about how the town could get involved in that. And, and however, there is, so, so there's a number of issues with that. The town's equipment isn't available right now, and that means we'd probably have to hire a contractor, or somebody would, because it's technically, in all likelihood, not town land there. It is, we believe it is land bank property. So that's just another element of complexity that has to be dealt with. But at this point, it, it sounds as though the water is coming out. Hopefully, there won't be saltwater intrusion in, because that could lead to a whole other level of complexity with fish situations and public health issues. If fish are, if there's a fish kill, that has been managed as a freshwater pond for quite a while now. I, I know that Mr. Ray will keep me up to date about what is going on at the head of the pond. And there's a hope, right at the moment anyway, I think, that the pond will close naturally. But it is kind of a dynamic situation, and we're keeping an eye on it. And I'm not sure, at this point, what else we can do.
Did Army Corps indicate that they could expedite those permits?
They did. Yes, they did.
What sort of timeframe is expediting?
I'm not sure. Jeff has that information, and we know he's upstairs at CommCom. But I, I think very quickly, but I don't even want to say a time, but it sounds, it sounds great.
Okay. Um, I'll let you make another comment, but I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion of something that's not on our agenda.
I simply want to thank the town manager. She's been working very diligently since 6 o'clock last night with me on this. And, and in all honesty, it's been kind of nice working with the boss again. There is virtually no chance that there will be an exchange here. Saltwater will not enter that pond because of the elevation of the pond itself. So it's simply going to drain out. It's, it's truly an unfortunate situation, because we're losing habitat for wildlife. We're losing fish, and it, it's deleterious to the pond and the area. And it's unfortunate that this heinous act happened. Thank you.
So I just had a question for Libby. So, you know, we all know that, you know, word gets around on this island. So people must know who did this. So what happens if we identify the individual, or say the individual has, you know, guilty conscience and comes forward and says, "I'm sorry, I did this"? What, what consequences can we levy upon, you know, that party's, at this time, unknown?
I will have to look into that, but I imagine there could potentially be, I'll let the chief answer then.
Did a lot of research on this. Actually, there's two years in prison, $25,000 fine, and they can be forced to pay for the cost of restoration of the damaged dune or coastal bluff, or whatever that was injured. CommCom has the authority to oversee the restoration of it.
And have you, you know, is your, is your eyes and ears are in the community? What are you hearing about, if anything, about the perpetrators of this act?
I'm not hearing anything.
Okay.
Environmental, I talked to Captain Blandier, and the environmental sergeant has been working on it since yesterday with the case. So he will keep us posted if anything comes up. But you're right, sometimes people talk after time, and sometimes it's a while.
So can we offer a bounty? I mean, a reward? All right.
Okay. Another public comment?
If I may, quickly, since this is on the floor. Having been in the building trades here, again, Andy Lowell is a citizen now. Having been involved in contracting here my entire career, I've built several houses where we'd excavate the hole. It's dry as a desert. Years later, basement's flooding. The pond, the, our water table fluctuates, gets very high this time of year. And, correct me if I'm wrong, there may be some people in here who can verify this, but the water company's pumping 750,000 gallons of water to its customers a day. Sewer treatment plant's taking in 3.5 million gallons a day. There's a lot of people pumping their basements into the sewer. My feelings is, there should have been an attachment years ago with the building permit of where the benchmark for the water table will reach its highest, and nobody's to dig their basement deeper than that. And this flooding basements, and us having the abilities to keep our water level in check, I feel that enough people are in the position where a class action suit could be brought against the town for allowing their homes to be built, and their basements ended up being flooding years later. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments tonight? We already took something up under new business. We'll move to approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. We have some minutes from March 21st.
Move approval? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Payroll warrants and treasury warrants.
Make a move approval? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Pending contracts. Are there any questions or comments on the pending contracts?
No. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Town manager's report, sorry. Oh, you're welcome. Um, we have town council here tonight to over, for an overview of the Cannabis Control Commission's final marijuana regulations. This is important for us to start talking about in case we want to institute any other bylaw or other changes prior to the end of the moratorium in December.
Good evening. Catherine Lockman with KP Law here this evening to talk about the final marijuana regulations. I prepared a PowerPoint which goes into probably more detail than I'll cover verbally here this evening, but I wanted to make sure that you all had the benefit of being able to read sort of the, the regulatory framework that's now in place. So on March 6th, the Cannabis Control Commission voted its final regulations. Those became effective and published with the Massachusetts Register on March 23rd. There's the citation for them can be found at 935 CMR 500. They're about 102 pages in length, so it's a little bit of reading for those of you who want to get through it in detail, but hopefully, the summary will, will give you the highlights. So under the final regulations, there are a number of marijuana establishments that are defined. These are really the commercial side of the business. The, these are the types of uses that the town is going to want to consider with respect to how, how they're zoning. I mean, there is zoning in place already for marijuana establishments, but the, the new regulations expand on these categories ever so slightly, which is something that, that the town may want to consider with respect to its own local regulation. So we still have a marijuana cultivator, retailer, product manufacturer, independent testing laboratory, and then the catch-all of licensed marijuana-related businesses. What was added in the final regulation are these four additional licensed categories. Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperative, microbusiness, third-party transporter, and an existing licensee transporter. In the draft regulations, there were also categories for social, onsite social consumption and delivery services, but those have been taken out of the final regulations, and the Cannabis Control Commission is going to take some additional time to, to study those issues and determine whether or how to license those types of uses. So for now, there's no delivery or onsite social consumption to be licensed by the Cannabis Control Commission. Really briefly, a marijuana cultivator is going to be engaged in the cultivation, process, and packaging, and then the transfer of marijuana to other marijuana establishments. They cannot sell direct to consumers. A craft marijuana cooperative is going to be a type of marijuana cultivator, and I'll get into what that entails in just a moment. The way that this is going to be managed on the state level is basically each licensee, with the exception of the craft cooperative, can have up to three cultivation licenses. And the way that's going to be measured is, is under this canopy concept, which is basically a measure of the number of square feet that is dedicated to the growing of marijuana. So they can apply for a license in a particular tier. And then in order to increase the tier under which they have a license, they have to demonstrate that they've sold at least 85% of their product consistently over six months preceding their application to increase. Or if they're not producing and selling the, at least 70% of what they're producing, they're going to be required to, to convert down to a lower tier of gross base.
Is that, is the square feet floor space?
It's, it's, the canopy is a defined term under the regulations. It's, it's basically the area in which mature plants are being cultivated, measured against distinct boundary areas. And if it's a, for example, if they're growing on shelves, each shelf constitutes?
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
So a craft marijuana cultivator, which was something contemplated under the draft regulations, but really a little bit more fleshed out under the final regulations, is basically a form of business entity that is going to allow for both cultivation and product manufacturing under a single license. The primary difference between a cultivation license and a craft marijuana cultivator license is the fact that they are able to obtain a single license, which allows the cultivating of up to the maximum tier, 100,000 square feet of canopy. And that cultivation space can be distributed among as many locations as they choose. In contrast, if you get a license for cultivation under the, just the standard cultivation license, each location in which you cultivate is going to require its own license. But here, you can have up to 1,000 square feet of canopy, and you can do that over any number of locations. You can also have up to three locations for product manufacturing under this license. And this is really a form of ownership designed to open the industry to smaller companies and cooperatives. And there's a requirement that you have to be a Massachusetts resident for at least 12 months prior to being part of such a cooperative. Product manufacturers, that's pretty straightforward. They can obtain manufacture, process, and package marijuana, marijuana and marijuana products. Again, there's a limitation in this category that they cannot distribute direct to consumers. Marijuana retailers, this is going to be your commercial sales. They can purchase and deliver marijuana and marijuana products from marijuana, other marijuana establishments, deliver, sell, and transfer to marijuana establishments and to consumers. They may be co-located with a medical marijuana treatment center. Then we have a research facility. These entities are not able to sell the marijuana they cultivate. They can cultivate, but it's only for research purposes. The independent testing laboratory, this is going to be an important point for, for Nantucket, and we'll get into special regulations. But basically, the way that all of the marijuana that's cultivated and processes and sold in Massachusetts is going to be monitored by the Cannabis Control Commission is through these independent testing laboratories. And there's a requirement that the product that is grown and sold be subject to particular testing standards. Testing for pesticides, for contaminants, testing on the amount of THC. So these independent testing laboratories are going to be located across the state, and anybody who's growing is going to have to submit samples to those laboratories to get their product certified. There's also going to be a standards testing laboratory, which is basically an independent testing laboratory that provides blind tests to verify the results of the independent laboratory. So that's a separate licensed type of use. Now, the marijuana transporter, this is a new license classification. This was not something that was enumerated under the statute. Or it was in the draft regulations, but it's been clarified in these final regulations. And really, the point of a marijuana transporter is that there are very specific transportation security standards that apply to anyone who's transporting marijuana. They have to be particular types of secured vehicles. They're required to have at least two employees operate them. They have to have particular locks and cameras. And, and so the thought is that there may be some companies that don't want to make the investment into the transportation side of this industry. And so they're providing a license for either third-party transporters or an existing licensee transporter, such that they can do the transporting for these establishments, and they can make the investment in that infrastructure. So it can be either, for example, a cultivator or processor who wants to also have transportation services that it leases out to other, or provides to other establishments, or it can be a business entity all on its own. That's this third-party transporter, which is, it has no other marijuana establishment license, but it just provides a transportation service. So that's going to be a licensed use under these final regulations. There's also this marijuana microbusiness, and it's a really a small-scale marijuana cultivator or a product manufacturer, or it could be co-located. Very small, under 5,000 square feet of gross base. feet of gross base, and the product manufacturer can only purchase up to, I think, 2,000-- I'm forgetting the measure of product to process over the course of a year. They cannot have ownership or stake in any other marijuana establishment. And again, this is something that's open primarily to residents of Massachusetts. So, that's sort of a subset of the cultivation and processing. The timeline for how this is going to roll out on the licensing side of things, we've all been looking to this April 1st as the date that the Cannabis Control Commission begins to issue or accept license applications. They're actually going to do a little bit slower rollout of these license applications. So, between April 1st and 15th, they're going to do a certification of priority applicants, which is going to be anyone who has a provisional or final certificate of registration on the medical marijuana side, and then also these economic empowerment applicants, which are individuals who qualify under this definition, which is really communities in which they've been disproportionately impacted by the criminal prosecution of drug crimes. So, those applicants can be certified. April 15th, they're going to start accepting the actual license applications from these priority applicants, and they're not opening application just generally until May 1st. And first, they're going to do licenses for cultivation, micro-business, craft cooperatives, the testing laboratories, and laboratory agents. Obviously, there needs to be product before you can sell it, so they're not going to, they're going to delay the retail and product manufacture and transportation license applications to June 1st. So, then it's 90 days after that before you're going to see retail licenses issued if you have a new applicant coming in under that process. Really briefly, here's just your definitions of what constitutes a priority applicant or an economic empowerment applicant, which I sort of just basically covered. All right. So, this is how the licensing process is going to work. There's basically a three-packet system that is, with respect to what has to be filed with the Cannabis Control Commission. These applications can come in in any order. Whoops. They can come in in any order, but in order for an application to be complete, all three of these packets have to be filed. There's an application of intent. That's really sort of your preliminary stuff, your incorporation, your bond, your municipal information, which we're going to get into. Then, you have a backgrounds check packet, and then a management operations profile. So, this is the role, a summary of the role that a municipality is going to play in the licensing with the Cannabis Control Commission. Whoops, that should say final regulations. So, as part of their license applications, the applicants are going to be required to do three things. They're going to have to conduct a community outreach hearing. They're going to have to enter into a host community agreement with the municipality, and there's also going to have to be local certification of compliance with zoning and buffer requirements. So, this community impact meeting was something that really came out of the first round of draft regulations and has been codified in the final regulations. So, an applicant is required to hold a community outreach meeting within six months prior to their submission of an applicant with the CCC. So, it's not really a public hearing because it's applicant-initiated, but it looks and feels like a public hearing in that there's particular notice requirements, including being advertised at least seven calendar days prior to the meeting, copy of the notice being filed with the town clerk and planning board and the contracting authority for the town, and then notice to a butters. These hearings are going to have to include a discussion of the proposal, the proposed address of the project, the security information for the site, the steps that the applicant's going to take to prevent diversion to minors, their plan for having a positive community impact, and information to demonstrate that their proposed location is not going to be a nuisance. They're also required to take questions from the community members. The host community agreement, this is something that we've discussed before, but basically, there's an opportunity for municipalities to recoup some of the impact, the cost associated with having these establishments in their communities. The cap on these remains at 3% of gross sales, and the time limit for the initial negotiated fee is five years, subject to renegotiation. However, this is supposed to be reasonably related to the costs imposed, and a municipality is required to document their costs. An applicant has to certify to the Cannabis Control Commission that has entered into a host community agreement as part of its application, and this is now a prerequisite to an application even being filed with the CCC. So, an applicant that wants to file with the CCC has to do two things before that license goes in. They have to hold their community impact meeting, and they have to have an executed negotiated host community agreement.
Just stay on that for a minute.
Yeah.
At what point do the municipalities have options about whether or not to enter into agreement such as that?
You mean, could you refuse to enter into an agreement?
I'm just saying, if someone comes and says, "I want to negotiate a host community agreement," what if you can't agree to the terms? What if, you know, what happens if the parties can't come to a negotiated settlement?
If they can't come to a negotiated settlement, then an application can't be filed with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the third role for municipalities in the licensing process is the certification that there is compliance with local bylaws or ordinances. This comes at the end of the application process, and once you have an application deemed complete by the Cannabis Control Commission, they will send notice to the municipality that they have a final complete application. From that date, the municipality has 60 days to respond and indicate whether or not the applicant is in compliance with a local ordinance or bylaw. And if there's no communication sent, they will be deemed to be in compliance. Now, this doesn't mean that they need to have their special permit in hand, if there's a special permit requirement. What you're really certifying is just that it would be possible for them to locate in that district, subject to discretionary permitting. So, there's not a requirement that you have all of those permits in place before you make the certification. The buffer zone has been clarified under the final regulations as being not located within 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten through grades 12. They've also clarified that that buffer zone is to be measured from the lot lines of the impacted property. Municipalities may adopt an ordinance or bylaw that reduces that distance requirement, but the language of the state law seems to indicate that increasing that above the 500 feet would not be permitted.
So, the question, define school. Is there a certification of a type of school? Because we had a conversation about the buffer zone with, I don't know, a dance studio or something.
So, this is a public or private school providing education, kindergartens K through 12. So, it's really like your elementary, middle, or high schools. It's not going to be your extracurricular activities--
Okay, okay.
--that these students who happen to be in those grades attend. It's the actual providing of that education. So, there have been lots of questions about whether or not that buffer zone could be applied to more uses than just the K through 12 educational uses, and that's kind of an open question right now. It's silent as to whether or not there is the ability to increase the types of uses, but I know that the zoning that was passed by the town complied with this. It was 500 feet from public schools, and it did not include any additional uses. Some of this is just a quick refresher. There's still the ability to prohibit or limit. The same procedures apply if you're going to prohibit or limit to fewer than 20% or fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment centers. The requirement still requires for communities that voted yes a ballot question and the passage of a bylaw ordinance by town meeting if you're going to ban or limit.
When you're talking one or more types--
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking, could you have micro manufacturers but not have retail? Is that, what are the options?
Right. So, marijuana establishment is that umbrella term that basically all of those enumerated different types of commercial uses. So, if you want to prohibit the operation of one or more type, you're going to look to those categories and determine which ones perhaps you want to allow, and if you want to prohibit, for example, retail sales, or if you want to prohibit cultivation, I mean, that's going to fall under the different type categories. Or it can be a complete prohibition of everything.
And for us here, though, if we were to prohibit cultivation, then that would stop everything, right?
You would.
It's a different hair.
It's, that would be effectively a prohibition--
Right.
--of the entire industry here if you prohibited cultivation.
Right.
But Katie, could I ask too, so, but the board or town meeting and a ballot vote could limit or prohibit craft and something else but not retail?
Right. So, I mean, you can look--
Or those other things, but allow craft?
Right. So, if you prohibited retail, then your craft grower and product manufacturer would have no place to sell their products--
Okay.
--because they, only the retailer has the ability to sell direct to consumers. So, for Nantucket, because of your unique situation, it will be difficult to prohibit one or more type without having a significant impact in the ability of the industry to--
We can't, couldn't they sell to the medical marijuana if we allowed that?
Well, medical marijuana is a separate licensing procedure, and they have to grow and process and sell their own product.
So, they're not taking any product from outside?
No.
Could they sell it, could a craft sell it off island?
If they could figure out how to--
Legally get it off--
--get it off the island, which, under current federal law--
Right.
--that's not possible.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one more question.
Yeah.
And I was reading on the state website, I don't think they have this answered yet, but the 20% of the package store licenses--
Mm-hmm.
--right? So, we have nine seasonal, eight annual. Are they considering that 17 for us?
So, it actually only applies to the annual licenses because it's issued under Generalized 138, Section 15, which is not on that slide, but that is the reference. And Section 15 is annual licenses, and seasonal licenses are governed by a separate section.
Okay.
So, you would be looking at just your annual licenses for the purposes of determining your limitation if you wanted to go fewer than 20%.
So, 1.6, so they decide on, is that rounded up to two yet? Have they put anything in the regulations?
I mean, if you're looking to go fewer, then you're going to have to look at sort of--
Yeah.
--your whole number.
So, if we were to only do one--
It might be two.
If we do one, then we'd have to go to town meeting for a ballot.
If you were going to do one.
Yeah.
Right. So, this brings me to this next slide here, which is that you can impose bylaw limitations on retail establishment amounting to 20% or higher than the number of package store license issued without the two-step ballot or bylaw process. The ballot or bylaw process for limitation only applies if you want to go beneath a particular threshold. If you want to impose a limitation that's higher, then you're exempt from the ballot process, but you can still impose a limitation through a bylaw. So--
Which would be a two-thirds vote.
If you do through it, mm-hmm. Unless it's done as a general bylaw, and that is a possibility of doing it as a general bylaw. There are benefits and drawbacks to that interpretation, just in terms of what the most appropriate way to accomplish that goal would be. But there's a strong argument for the fact it could be done as a general bylaw since this type of limitation is not something you commonly see in zoning ordinances. Zoning ordinances often deal with complete prohibitions of uses, but it's very rare that, for example, you would see a zoning bylaw that prohibited, or that said, "We're going to limit in this zoning district to no more than two drugstores," or "no more than, you know, three restaurants." So, there's a lot of nuances of land use and zoning law and concepts of uniformity that would perhaps weigh in favor of a limitation being passed as a general bylaw as opposed to a zoning bylaw. As I mentioned, social consumption is not currently licensed by the state. There is still this provision in state law with respect to the fact that social consumption can really only be permitted through a separate type of ballot process, which is a citizen-initiated ballot process. Those can only be on the biennial state election ballots, and so, given the fact that there is no current licensing for that use, probably there, it would not make sense for there to be a ballot, you know, if there was a ballot question now, they would have to wait for the Cannabis Control Commission to put in place regulations. So, you're probably looking at least two years out before the possibility of a social consumption ballot question and licensing by the Cannabis Control Commission would be in place to allow that type of use. Another change under these regulations is that there's specific language that allows municipalities to impose local licensing requirements in addition to their zoning regulations. So, and really, the thing to think about if you're going to do local licensing is to ensure that any licensing scheme that you put in place has a fee that is directly related to the cost of administering that program, and that it doesn't conflict with the state regs. Boards of health also have the option of adopting local regulations pertaining to issues within their purview.
Can you give us some examples of that?
So, for example, if somebody is doing product manufacturing and producing edibles, and those edibles have to comply with your state regulations with respect to food handling and safety, and the Board of Health wants to have some additional inspection or regulatory oversight of that, they can do that in their own local regulation. For the sake of time, I'm just going to really breeze through these last few slides, but the state licensing process has these different packets, which we sort of covered briefly. There's mandatory disqualifications for individuals that have certain criminal offenses and backgrounds. There's a number of operational requirements in the regulations for marijuana establishments, testing protocols, requirements for a bond in case they need to, you know, shut down their operation and destroy product. And there's requirements with respect to waste disposal, energy conservation, and environmental impacts. There are also some very detailed security requirements for these facilities, things such as alarm requirements, visitor logs, the way that product has to be stored, and access to it will be restricted. And there's a requirement that security plans be filed with local law enforcement. Nobody can enter these facilities without a government-issued ID to verify their age, and if you have a co-located establishment, they have to also have their DPH program ID showing they're a patient. There are cultivation and processing requirements, efficiency in equipment standards, standards with respect to the way food is prepared, handled, and stored. There are a number of requirements with respect to marketing, advertising, and branding. There's a small list of things that they are permitted to do. For example, they can have a logo, but they can't use medical symbols or images of marijuana. They can't sponsor charitable or sporting events. They have to keep everything locked inside display cases, and basically, it's fairly restrictive. Now, there's a long list of things they're prohibited from doing in marketing and advertising. I'm going to kind of just skip through those. You have them in your packet, but there's at least that many pages of prohibited practices. Yeah.
So, how is that enforceable? How would, if that's abused somehow?
Yeah.
And a lot of it's going to be very, you know, gray line, but--
Yeah. So--
--area.
Those types of things are what the Cannabis Control Commission is going to have an enforcement division, and they're going to be charged with enforcing those. Most of that is not going to fall on the shoulders of municipalities. Oh, it just keeps going forward without me. Sorry. It's not going to be on the shoulders of municipalities to enforce. The, there's going to be all of the testing standards and packaging standards that they have to meet on the CCC level before a product can go to market.
Thanks.
There are extensive labeling requirements and warning requirements. They can't use, for example, transparent packaging, bright colors. They can't create a product that resembles existing non-marijuana products, so you can't have, you know, something that resembles Oreos or something that resembles food that might be enticing to a child because they recognize it as something-- Sorry, this is jumping all over the place on me. Is it on slideshow so that it goes forward on its own? Okay. All right. If they have, there's also lots of regulations with respect to serving sizes and how things are apportioned to try and avoid people consuming more than they're aware they're consuming with respect to the amount of marijuana in a particular product. They have to be easily and permanently scored to identify individual servings. There also needs to be comprehensive packaging requirements and the serving sizes-- and the serving sizes are limited to no more than five milligrams of THC. So here are the special regulations for Nantucket, and they really pertain to the testing standards. So there's going to be these statewide testing standard, test, statewide testing requirements that are going to be carried out through these independent testing laboratories. And, it's going forward. And, and what, the exemption has now been imposed for Nantucket is the fact that they no longer, they are not going to be required to comply with the independent testing laboratory standards necessarily, and they're not going to be required to transport their product off-island to these independent testing laboratories. So what they will have to do is that they're required to test their marijuana products in a manner that's not unreasonably impractical, meaning financially unviable, but that also adequately protects public health. And the testing has to be approved by the Cannabis Control Commission, but any product that's sold on the island is going to have to have a warning label that states that there was limiting testing for contaminants and pesticides. And, and that's going to be in place until, you know, things are resolved in this way. So this is the best, this was the way they got around the transportation issue. They're gonna allow product to be grown, cultivated, processed, tested on the island and sold with these warning labels, so.
So are they just not really thinking about how the seeds get here?
They have not addressed that.
Katie, could a, could a third party, and this probably isn't economically viable, but could a third party come in and start a business that just tests this? Let's just say there was three or four, could they, could another company come in and just test it for everyone who has a license?
Yes, so, I mean, there's nothing that precludes somebody from getting a license for an independent testing laboratory on Nantucket. I guess the, the question is, is that a financially viable operation based on, you know, how many, how many providers you have here growing and processing?
But that, that's an option, that's a license, that's an option.
That is an option, mhm.
Katie, just to clarify, sorry, this is going way back, but that third-party transportation is licensed business-to-business where its delivery is, is to the consumer directly?
That's right, mhm, and so delivery to consumer is what is not being allowed, but a, a license to transport between establishments is, by a third party, is, is going to be a licensed use.
Okay, thanks.
So that was, that was my summary. There's a lot more in there, but hopefully that's the high points that gives you sort of a, a general overview for how this industry is going to be set up, what it's going to look like, and, and what some of the issues are for, for municipalities going forward.
Any other questions?
I think we need, we, I don't know if we, we do it tonight, but I think at some point we should be discussing how, what we would like to see. I, I personally would like to make sure that we go slowly. It's easier to pull the, let the reins out than to pull them back. And I think we have a serious, you know, we have serious drug and drinking and issues on the island that we're, we had, on Monday, we had, you know, a big meeting about it, and I think that we have to be very careful. And if we're one of the few places that do, does this, and we have three or four retail shops, we're gonna have a lot harder time on 4th of July and on the big weekends than we have already. And we'll be, we're trying to be, we're trying to dampen the party atmosphere, sort of the, you know, craziness in the summer already. I think we have to really talk about where we want to go with this. These businesses are very water-intensive, they're very electric, they take a lot of electricity to operate. There's some other issues, you know, we were already worried about a third cable. We should just really move carefully and let other people be the guinea pigs. You know, I think, I'm all in favor of the medical. I think that's great, if we have one or two of those and they're medical-only, that's fine. But I just, I am very hesitant to jump in and be, you know, be the marijuana, summer marijuana resort. I think we have, you know, some, that's, I'd be very hesitant to want to be that.
But let's put it on the agenda. I have it on, you know, we can have it on several meetings, and it's, 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 for me, it's as much about creating some community awareness, having a conversation within the community, and, and understanding what our options are. Because the moratorium is, that's just around the corner. I mean, that's, so.
I think it would be good to have another public forum about it and get some broader community input, really reach out to people.
I think this board has to, we, we haven't really sat down and said what we're, as a, as a board, what we're willing to, you know, countenance, I guess, and I think, I think it's important that we do that pretty quickly, so.
I think, and in conjunction with the public outreach, now that we have options and understand what the possibilities are, I think clarifying from the public what a yes vote meant is really important because I think, I, I don't know how aligned this board is, not alone with each other, but with what the public is thinking, so.
Well, I, I know what we're gonna, we've had a, a meeting, I know what's gonna happen if we have a public meeting. The people who are, you know, gonna benefit and, and really want this are gonna show up and talk about how great it is, and most of the public that's gonna, is gonna not show up. So I think, I, I just think that we, we know what the result's gonna be. Part of why we're here is to make the hard decisions, is to look at all the information, not just, you know, putting our finger in the air and seeing what the, you know, loud six or eight people that show up want.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that that's true after what I saw on Monday night, this community response.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think that group may show up negatively, yeah, but-
Also, I don't, even based on the, the meeting that we did have, I, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable making the assumption that we know what people are going to say. I think that people were concerned that there was one or the other, black and white, ban or no. And I think now that we have some options, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable assuming I know what they're going to say. Maybe, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I hope you're right.
But I think, I mean, we're elected to represent those people, and we know probably more than most people. So I think it's, you know, the buck stops here, and we have to start trying to figure out among ourselves what we're, you know, what our, what our, you know, what our path is.
Well, do we, I think I hear Matt saying he, you'd, you'd prefer to prohibit, at least initially.
Yeah, I was trying to find a way to have the micro-processes. I, I, I think the guys who are doing it here on island are already doing it. They're selling, you know, they're giving it to, they're not selling it, that's illegal. They're giving it to each other or to friends or whatever they're doing. I completely, I think that's fine, I think medical is fine. I think, you know, potentially having large companies coming in onto the island to, you know, to, for the summer season to increase that whole part of the island, that that whole part of culture, I think is a mistake. So I, I, you know, if we, and if we do do it, I'd like to do one or two, but I'd like to do it in a couple of years, once we see what happens to some of the other communities that are gonna be doing this.
Well, whatever we do, we're gonna have to take it to town meeting. So, and our option that we've discussed is taking something to town meeting in the fall, prior to the end of the moratorium. But I just, I feel like I need to be more informed from people in the public. I think that they need to understand the different options and be presented with a few different paths, and maybe we can define what those paths are as a group at a subsequent agenda meeting, or, I mean, a board meeting. But I still think we're gonna, we're gonna need to get some more community input on this issue.
And that, that was really what we had said when we put the moratorium in place, is that we needed the community input, so.
Question for, for Katie, the, the two current, they're not licenses, they're not full established licenses that we have now. They're, what's the terminology, what they have right now?
Provisional certificate of registration.
So we have two of those now, right, just for the public, anybody who's listened to this?
For medical.
For medical, right, and so, come January 1st, and they will apply for their license, licenses?
Well, there's, you, you only have one entity that received a provisional certificate of registration prior to July 1st of 2017.
Right.
So, and, and that location does not currently have a, a location, and they haven't moved forward to their final certificate of registration yet. But they do have some protection, allowing them to convert to a recreational establishment based on the fa, the timing of that certificate. And, and if you're going to allow marijuana in any capacity, anything short of a ban is going to allow, they're gonna be allowed to convert.
And they'll be able to be all of those, right, a retailer, manufacturer, cultivator?
If that's what their medical marijuana license allowed them to do, then yes. Because they can convert in any of the areas that they had received their licensing for. Now, the second applicant came in after July 1st of 2017, so there's actually no, no right to convert to adult-use marijuana for that establishment. That is, would be, however, as of right now, the town does have zoning in place, although there is the moratorium, the zoning that was passed does allow for that use in the zoning district where they have, have established their medical use. So they could, unless that, that zoning is changed, they could come before the, the town and, and apply for the permits and request the host community agreement and, and hold the, the community impact meeting, which I, is scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, and seek to, to do that conversion.
So they would go through that whole process that, that was just, we just went through, right, for retail?
Now, they're not going to be able to apply for that license until the moratorium is lifted because right now, the moratorium is what precludes them from, from having the zoning in place necessary to move forward on the state level.
And when we, when we approved the first medical marijuana license, it wasn't thinking that it was gonna be automatically allowed to convert. You know, I think that that's, you know, I think that we were, we made a decision under one set of, you know, we made a choice under one set of rules that changed midstream. So I mean, I, you know, and I've asked town council about this previously, and I think we have some standing if we wanted to say no to them. You know, I, I don't, you know, how can they, but anyway.
And there's no, Katie, there's no timeframe, as in, once you have that, and if you don't, if you aren't up and running and convert by a certain time, then it's invalid? No.
No, and there's actually no timeline or deadline on them achieving their final certificate of registration with DPH. That's an open-ended window with respect to that timeline.
Sort of the unintended consequences of some of this.
I thought it was just good to kind of review the current-
Yeah.
Medical marijuana holders, how that would work with each of them, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for coming, you voted to catch.
Oh, you are, okay. So, do you want to put this on, I guess, leave it to Chair and Vice Chair and myself to look at dates, to put on some further discussion and maybe schedule another public forum and plan that out? And we may want to have Katie at that?
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah.
Yes, soon, soon.
I'm just talking out loud here, but potentially, you could maybe talk more about what, do you want to do the public forum before you talk more about what you all are thinking?
I'm getting the impression that maybe we want to propose a few ideas for the public forum to then get input on. So, the, is that seem fair?
Why don't we just propose we want to, we want to have recreational marijuana, as many as they want? Well, that's what we have. No, and that'll bring, that'll bring the people out on both sides. So if we say none at all, it's gonna bring the people that want it out, and everyone else is gonna stay at home, I think.
So, yeah.
I don't know, I'm just thinking the strategy to get people here.
I think we should talk this through.
What's the strategy to get people to show? If people think that it's not gonna happen, I don't, you know, they're gonna, either side, you know, what's the way to get both sides to show up?
I don't know, I don't know if we want to make proposals geared to trying to drive attendance at a public hearing. Personally, I'd rather think about what we, as a board, would consider to be appropriate for our community.
Yeah, well, I was being somewhat flippant with that, because I think that's why we got the result we got last time.
I think this board should take in the information, schedule it for one of the meetings in April, or the first meeting in May, and shoot for having a public forum early June?
Okay, so maybe schedule for April 25th or May, whatever the first meeting is in May, I think it's the second?
Or late, public forum late May, we'll have to get notices out and so forth.
I, we can, we can assume that it may take another, more than just one meeting for us to reach some.
I agree.
Especially if we come up, let's, let's write this up and then come back, and ba-ba, so.
Liv, if something needs to go on to, if there is a special town meeting, is there any dates that, we did, what do we have to have figured out by certain dates?
I haven't put any calendar together, because I'm not sure when we would be having a special, but I probably, October and November.
Careful, Andrew is already just kind of drooling over there.
I know, I don't want to say-
He's over there writing zoning articles.
I didn't even want to say that, that word, special.
Well, there was a commitment already made to-
To Andrew.
Have a, no, actually, to Harbor Place, but-
Right. I just don't know if there's a timeframe that we should look at.
There's, there's going to be a time-
Three meetings.
It'll be early summer, at the latest.
And we can't leave it to the last minute and then try to pull it all together? I think we gotta keep moving on this.
Would you want to have your continuing discussion sooner, like your next meeting?
Yeah.
You, you-
I think that would be fine, but I think the, the 11th might be a little full, so, but let's see if that can work.
I'd say one of the next two meetings, whatever you guys.
And you mentioned Harbor Place, and that's probably, that's something we should, as a board, discuss more about what commit, what was made, so.
Citizen departmental request, Cisco Brewery.
Good evening. This request is for a temporary one-night extension of Cisco's entertainment and liquor license. The history of that is they have been able to request special extensions for special events over the years. I included in the packet the last time that was done, hasn't been done since 2015. They did a wedding, something for Bartletts, they don't do it often. In this case, they're requesting an extension on Thursday, June the 21st, in association with the, on Nantucket Film Festival. Are looking to host, what?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I have the date wrong.
Oh, well, it's in June, on a Thursday in June. So they are going to 22nd work, 21st?
June 31st, yeah.
It's Thursday the third week in June during the film festival. So they are working with the film festival to have a event that is open to the public. Normally, that doesn't happen, it's, you know, passholders and things of that sort. We certainly have been encouraging all of these festivals to do things, you know, during the festival that's open to the community. This is a chance for the community to come and, you know, meet with screenwriters and the filmmakers and that sort of thing, because this is normally a closed event. So the request is to extend it until 10:00 PM for this one evening. Any questions?
I just, to clarify, what is the evening?
What is it, the event?
What is the date?
The date is-
Thursday the 21st.
Oh, that is correct, okay.
Thursday, June 20th.
So on the request is correct behind you, Thursday the 21st during the film festival. And again, it, it's late because they have films all day, so generally, these events and parties are late. In these other instances, we didn't have any complaints or anything for those events when it was extended. They currently end at 7:00 PM, their license.
I don't, I don't have any issues, and you haven't gotten any phone calls or?
No.
No, I've not gotten anything from public. Move to approve if there's no?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously?
And I just want to, my son works there, I can still, it's not gonna affect me.
The next is Nantucket Cottage Hospital. I'm just gonna excuse myself for a second.
And these, these coming are traditional requests that we have every year for these events that extend past fundraising events that extend past the 10:00 PM bylaw.
And we had no issues last year?
No, no, this is because they're in the upper parking lot for this part of the event. The main event does end before 10:00, but they have that VIP tent, and that's not licensed, so we do this request.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, number three?
Number three.
Oh, this is for the open container, a release of this, that we also do for, ensconce it for Daffodil, so that people can bring their beverages on the beach.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Last one is Summer Groove, which goes until 11:00 PM. Again, it's the noise waiver past 10:00 PM, and it'll, it'll be indoors, but we'd just like to make sure it's approved.
Any motion?
Move to, move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Andrew, you're up. See if we can get this done before Dawn gets back.
Right, okay. So we're back to an, an earlier issue, and this is, involves the, there is a series of lots along Tacoma, and the condition from the planning board permit was that you would refrain from doing any advance clearing on these lots over a period of time that the project behind them essentially might be under construction. So, again, the planning board- So, again, the planning board's looking for a commitment that you will not, it doesn't mean you can't use those. If a building permit is issued and you want to proceed, then the clearing would need to be in connection with a building permit, but there would be no advanced clearing with a period of tree removal that might be, you know, a long period of time. And again, screening is the issue here. So we're asking that the board commit to that for those, I believe it's eight vacant lots along Tacoma.
So make a motion that we approve the request for commitment not to clear cut items as outlined in the places described.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I just have one, I'm in favor, but I have a question, Andrew. What would happen if we said we weren't willing to, you know, what if we, what if, like, let's not use this one, let's say the county one. If we'd said, no, we don't wanna screen it because it's unsafe sometimes when we make these hidden alleys, and we've had issues in these areas, and we don't wanna do that?
Yep.
What would happen if we had made that decision tonight?
We would need to.
Would you go back to the planning, you'd have to change it?
We would need to re-advertise and reopen the planning board public hearing for consideration on that.
Okay.
Yep.
So that was unanimous?
Yeah. Yeah, and I just, I'm just pointing out that sometimes there are things that are being done that then we have to do, that.
Okay, you're up next.
All right. Okay, so item six, which has four interrelated actions, this is a project that began quite some time ago with a different board, where we were looking at basically open space protection down at the end, what's shown on your map as Halbert Avenue. So this is a portion of Halbert Avenue that doesn't exist, it goes through dunes and is not recognized as a road at all. The point was to remove this road and to gain further public access here. We worked with a property owner, you can see their house is the one that's on the long skinny lot, number three. So Eleanor gave a pretty good description of the various actions. This took quite a while because it was stuck in land court for a while. But essentially, the town gains basically the ability to protect this area, which has, like I said, the dune field and other things. It gets the additional parcel, which was on that last map, parcel number four, and it also gets a one big beach easement across parcel number three, which eventually will get us to Jefferson and have that interconnected. So the property owners were, have been incredibly patient through this whole process. What they get through, out of this is, they currently have a somewhat landlocked parcel where they would have to make extensive changes to those dunes to get access, and they've done it in a, I think, a very low-key way now, and that's been worked out. And again, they release all their rights in the road, which allows the town to preserve that land for open space. So it asks that you approve those four items as A, B, C, and D under number six.
So essentially, this is allowing them to gain access, parking access to the house with minimal damage to the dunes?
Correct.
And it was, it, it took from 2011 until now because of land court?
Right, and I think the authorization maybe came in from 2008. So it takes filings and, again, there's changing, there were even changing family members throughout that had to be addressed, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
A through. A, B, C, D.
A, B, C, D, yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we've got two consent items. Do we need any questions or motion?
Motion to approve? Uh, I'll start with one, motion to approve one as, as outlined.
Is there a second?
Just making sure which is which.
Second.
Both off the low beach.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously on item number two.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, I'm Chair and Board Members. So behind you, you'll see there's a map which shows, I'm gonna call them the perpendicular roads. These are perpendicular to Skyline. You see that they are Andrew, Clay, Jackson, Sumner, and Washington. And then there's remnants of a parallel road to, somewhat parallel to Skyline, which is called Onishka, which is the dotted line in the upper part of the slide. So authority to acquire what are sometimes called as the ghost paper streets was voted by the town meeting back in 2011, giving the board the authority to essentially take two steps to close these really redundant and leftover streets out. What happened here is that the 1889 plan for this area had these streets shown on it, and then a subdivision plan was filed over it in the 1970s. So these roads are not necessary. It was specifically discussed in the planning board decision of that time that these would eventually be removed unless they had a public purpose. And typically, what has happened, or what happened before we took action to pass these articles, is there would be an effort to open them up, which would disturb the adjacent neighbors, it would cut down trees, it would reduce the buffers between the lots, and it was something really we wanted to avoid and eventually remove. So in this case, the, as you can see, the streets kind of wander their way through the lots. The property owners have expressed that they don't want them opened. There's a use proposed, which has a valid permit for agricultural use in the, in the back of them, that everyone would prefer that they use an alternative access out through the northern part of the property. So, and I believe at least there's been an agreement in, in concept to that. So what we're asking tonight is that the board take the initial step and acquire easements E1 through E10 towards removing those as right-of-ways. That will assist in essentially closing that particular access off, which is not needed. It's not needed for any public purpose, and it's really disruptive for the private impacts that it will cause.
Okay. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Art Gasparo. I prepared the plan behind you, and I'm here speaking on behalf of property owner Ashley Fredrickson, right in the middle between Clay Street and Jackson Street, and to let you know that we're wholly supportive and would appreciate your, your positive action on this. And I'm also present should you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any questions or wanna take an action?
I just had a question about the other map that was in, the one, this one that I think shows all the ghost streets.
That's it.
These are all ones that we would take in the future, so now we're just looking at a couple of them?
We've taken a, a number of them throughout time. So that was, remember that those authorizations give the board the authority to move forward on these. And again, since they are basically private streets, the property owners pay for the plans to be created, and they also pay for the, reimburse the town for its legal work. So it's done on a case-by-case basis, typically, again, where either issues come up or where someone's being proactive about removing them. So we have a process that we generally go through to get them in the pipeline to be done. Okay?
So we're authorizing these to be taken, and then they go into the yard. So what's the next step?
The next step would be that the board would look these over, determine if there's any public use for them, and then if not, they would, there would be a further action at a subsequent meeting where you would release these easements back to the underlying property owners. So, and basically, then they're gone.
And in this zoning, do you anticipate that, does that, is that going to increase ground cover?
Not in this case, because these are easements as opposed to actual parcels of land. So here, the property owners pay for 100% of the area of these lots right now, and they're not getting any additional land, any additional taxable or land that adds to that. In most cases, I think most people don't really know that they exist.
Right. And so what is the difference between a ghost street and a paper street?
So what we've, again, this is sort of our, our own terminology here, but a regular paper street is something that's clearly shown on the map, and it's generally the paper street that exists as a separate parcel where.
Okay.
So it's, it's not the situation you have here. The, the ghost street is there's an underlying easement that has not been properly extinguished.
Okay, and that's the 1889 that relates?
Here, it's the 1889, but in general, there's, this is any of these ways laid out prior to 1955, and there's quite a few of them that frequently pop up.
Are there any improvements on any of these areas?
Not on, not as of yet on any, I mean, there may be some driveway aprons.
Okay.
Is there any? I don't think there's many actual improvements within these ways.
Most of them are vacant, except for one apron.
Okay. Onishka, what does Onishka, who, street, Onishka Ave?
Well, Onishka Ave.
Who was Onishka?
I, you know, I tried to Google that.
I was just looking at it.
Did you find anything?
No.
No, I didn't either. I think there was a similar street in Rhode Island somewhere, and I know that the Surfside Hotel was dismantled from down there, so I don't know. But I, we, we were.
Have to ask Robert Young.
We've talked about recreating that name somewhere else as a historic.
Put it on the list, possible.
Yes.
Street names.
Wait, Wait Drive.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve. The takings as outlined.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, selectmen's reports and comments. This is policy for the ratification of the action we took last week.
My only question, has town council reviewed this?
Town council wrote it.
Town council prepared it.
It's even better, thank you.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Committee reports. None for me.
I went to the Milestone Road Public Information Session two, yesterday, and the state was here, and they talked about the $2.5 million of where it came from, that they're putting into Milestone Road. And it's pretty much, the majority of it is markings. It's all, it's gonna make Milestone Road safer, but it's markings and signage, except Monemoy, the intersection of Monemoy and an intersection of Tom Nevers Road. And pretty much everybody at this meeting had no issues with Monemoy. It's, it's pretty much taking the Y's off and making it kind of a 90-degree turn to go into Monemoy. So they're doing the same thing in Tom Nevers, and that was a little more complicated, but I think the state heard everybody's opinions. But, so coming to Tom Nevers, when you are going to, you can go, you can take it at 20, 30 miles an hour, right? That Y, they're going to, pretty much it's gonna stay the same, except they're gonna make it more of a right-hand turn, like a 90-degree turn going in. So there's some concern that people who don't expect that on Milestone Road, heading the sconce, aren't gonna pay attention, and someone's gonna be stopping in front of them, almost like nobody or Farm Road, right? I think people will get used to it. So I was, it's slower. So slower is always safer, so it's gonna slow traffic down a little bit, so.
And this was the one we talked about last week, the week before. It was a 4-3 vote at NPDC with, you know, some strong personalities, saying it was the dumbest idea ever. I voted against that because I think it's gonna make bicycling safer, I think it's gonna make pedestrian crossing safer. Right now, it's a, it's quite a ways to get across that road. It's gonna make it a little smaller, it's gonna slow people down, they're gonna have to be more careful, so.
One, one idea was to, you know, when you, instead of having a straight shot where bikes can just fly across, curve it into Tom Nevers Road, but if you go too far back.
And you can't see them.
And you can't see, nobody can see anything. So there's a, it was a good conversation.
Yeah, no one will see it, and then they're gonna come flying around the corner anyway and hit you. So it's, even when you stop as a bicyclist, people, it's almost impossible to get across there sometimes.
Yeah.
It's so crazy, but.
And I did talk to them afterwards, and I said, is there any consideration of actually